Good evening, everyone. The Board of Supervisors of the Penn Township Perry County. We call this meeting to order. We will first rise and pledge allegiance to the flag in that moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to their under forty sins, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. The main purpose for having this meeting this evening was to move forward before our next Board of Supervisors meeting on the hiring and the realignment of the roadmaster and township manager. Okay. We have the ordinance here before us to reestablish the position of township manager/roadmaster, but the ordinance is to reestablish the position of manager. The purpose of this is to establish that it will be one person fulfilling both positions here in the township with dual responsibilities, roadmaster/ township manager. As both Brian and gentlemen, have you had an opportunity to look at the ordinance?
I have.
Okay. And I believe you had discussed there's some changes.
Yes, I'd like to propose changes.
Okay. Would we like to discuss those changes and then are we ready to ... I mean, we can discuss the changes that you see that we need to change or we can still advertise without the changes, just to advertise the ordinance that we chose. So choose.
Well, we have an opportunity to make changes before we adopt.
Oh, yes. Before we adopt, yes, yes. When we have the actual advertising of the ordinance, we'll have an opportunity to change between now and then and adopt it correctly.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Also before us is the job description and definition for the township manager. We, as the supervisors, had an executive session to discuss the matter, to make the changes. We did go line by line and sentence by sentence, paragraph by paragraph, and made some uniform changes to the township manager's job description. I believe with the cooperation of all three supervisors, we were able to come to a general consensus that in past, not to speak much about history, but in the past, this position as it was in place, lack of supervision or lack of discipline on the individual part. I believe with the changes that we made in the job description and the definitions, we were able as supervisors to clarify and identify areas where this previous position may have gone awry, and we make it more countability now than ever before, where we, as the three supervisors, along with office staff, and clear information given to the candidate and the person that we hire, will be making very clear that there will be oversight and there will be accountability of this position. And I believe with that said, being the part-time roadmaster and the township manager, I believe there's going to be enough to keep them busy to be able to. With speaking to the office staff, they also feel that with the ... some of the things that are on the secretary and in the township that ... not that some of these township managers' responsibilities that were theirs has now been split up into other departments, or at this current time, you know, there's things that Helen's doing that was once, and not to bring up the past or anything, but there was a time that Helen was really overwhelmed and some things have been missed oversight because of being so overwhelmed. But currently also our police department, with us having lack of officers and a training officer, Chief Pickles is now very involved in a lot more things with the police department. And some of these things that were given to the police department for oversight is now something that we feel that the township manager should be doing all along and want to take some of those responsibilities off the police department and back to better management. And that's that ... I don't want to ... Chief Pickles hasn't mismanaged anything, it's just that to be able to relieve some of the extra duties that he had been given back to this position. With that being said, is there any other input from the other two supervisors?
I have some changes.
Okay. Oh, absolutely.
Do we want to do changes now?
Um, we ... are they ... yeah, we can do it. Yes.
Well, the first thing is we had ... which each one of the first words, the verb, we had an S. We don't really need the S to be correct, and that would make it consistent with the other ordinance.
Okay, with the ... to align with the ordinance.
Right.
All right. Okay.
At the first one, after such, services such, there should be the word at after that, such as, and no comma.
Are you looking at the job description?
Yes, the job descriptions, under duties.
I just wanted to make sure.
Under duties and responsibilities.
Okay.
Under the second item, the next to last line, Board of Supervisors in accordance with applicable law, take personnel actions, I think that should be plural, and process grievances.
So, actions.
Yes. If you don't agree.
Oh, no. No.
Takes plural or actions plural?
Actions is plural. I'm suggesting we take away the S from all of the starting words for each item.
Okay.
And takes is ... it's within the body of item number two, but it's the same idea.
Correct.
Okay. The next to last one on the first page, partway down the line, comma, permit fees and fines, and that should be a period because you're starting the next sentence with direct reporting. It's a separate sentence.
Okay.
Okay? So it'll be period and then capital D. Second page, first item, I do suggest dropping the word overseas payment of bills.
Okay.
Second item, there's no apostrophe after develop, or there shouldn't be an apostrophe after develop. Fifth item, direct the reconciliation of checking accounts and balancing of bookkeeping Next item, preparation should be lowercase p. Going down to required knowledge, skills, and abilities, the fourth item, ability to scratch the first motivate, ability should read ability to effectively motivate. Motivate appears twice, before and after effectively. Something suggesting we scratch the first motivate.
Correct.
Last page, one, two. The second item ends with the word solutions on the second line of that item, and then the next sentence is ability. I think that should be brought out to the margin because it's a separate item. It shouldn't be at the end of ability to analyze municipal problems.
Okay, so solutions should be at the end of the line before.
Yeah, that's the last word for the line, item before, and then ability to develop is a separate new item.
Exactly.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay.
Maybe this one. Let me get this one.
No, I think you messed that one.
Take personnel actions and process grievances.
Process. Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. I think we had determined that we would be looking at ... we looked at several factors into budgeting the positions, and there was already $20,000 set aside in the budget for the part-time roadmaster. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And looking at the budget information that we were looking at, is that we looked at over the last, we went back, what, three years, Helen? 2013?
13 or 12 or 13, one of those two.
And we're looking at on average of the increased revenue in the township, and looking at those that we had come up with an average, and I believe looking at that was expenses/revenue. Some years, we would have, well, let's go back to 2013. We saw that there was revenue increase projected versus actual. Projected was $692,222, but actual was 802,182, which gave a difference of $109,960, so almost $110,000. We see a pattern here back into 2014 year budget. It was $6,701.50, and the actuals were actually for revenue was 852,391 with an increase or above projection, and the actual was $181,341. Or $341. 2015, we look at the budget there, and we see that we had a projection of $332,000 of revenue. The actuals were 8021 with a net there of $75,351. So if we look over the three-year period, we're looking on average about $130,000, roughly $130,000 increase, let's see, eighty ... about $122,000 increase on average over those three years. Also looking at the expenditures, line by line, looking at some of those, we do see that even with the expenditures, we had, going back to 2013, we had ... let me see, where's that number at, Helen? A moment. Okay, there we are. Back in 2013, we were looking at the expenditures. The budget was ... gotta line these up right. Okay. We had budgeted $810,000, no, we had budgeted $931,320, and the expenditure, so the actuals itself was $810,385, giving us a non ...
We didn't spend it.
We didn't spend it, of $167,061. We see that same thing for 2014. Projected was $952,371, and the actuals were 827,398. Funds not spent, it was $160,212. And then we see that same pattern following here for 2015. We projected $950,012 in expenses, and the actual expenditures themselves were $847,302, giving unspent funds of $138,251. But within those numbers of the funds not spent or the line items not spent, we see that the majority of those line items were the highway budget that was not spent. Former Chairman Holman was always cautious and wise in that way to always make sure that we're always banking money for the future of our roads, so that way we're not in a predicament down the road. So out of those hundred and some thousand dollars, I think we determined about $120,000 of that was roadmap, was money set aside that was not spent, but what Chairman Holman always tried to do was try to bank money to make sure that we had money for future road repairs and stuff like that. So if we take that $120,000 out, in some areas, we had $18,000 increase. We would have a $40,000 increase of money not spent, then likewise, we would see another $40,000. So outside of the roadmaster budget, taking that $120,000 out and not including it, it shows that we were banking roughly ... we're banking roughly about $160,000 a year without giving the exact numbers of between revenue and funds not spent from line items with not counting the roadmaster's budget and banking money for future roads. So with that being said, with the information given, we had talked in the session about budgeting line items and what would it cost for this position. And with Helen's assistance with this, we were able to determine that it's roughly $18,000 a year in benefits for each full-time employee of the township. And that covers the medical, the vision, the dental, pension, and all those items there. And these are figures that are outside of the police department because their pension's a little bit different than what the town, than what regular township is. So that these numbers don't reflect the same thing for the police department as they do for regular township employees. With that being said, I believe we've looked at the going rate for a roadmaster for a township of our size. We consulted PSATs with the information we've received from them. There are a lot of townships and boroughs in our area that are actually going to this part-time person, to our full-time person splitting responsibilities as in making sure that things are taken care of in the township and representation is there. We looked at Newbury Town, which is a very similar population status to us, though they are very populated in residence, as in they have a lot of housing developments, which we don't. But population-wise, they're very similar in structure. Looking at, we didn't look at East Pansboro because East Pansboro is a first-class township and much larger and much more developed and a lot bigger responsibilities there. We did, I did talk to Mr. Scott Miller of Marysville Borough. They also have a split responsibility where they have a roadmaster/office manager. Now, Scott has been there for several years, so his salary is quite a lot more than what a starting position is. We would never begin to compete.
Is that his proper last name?
No, it's not.
Scott Weaver?
Thank you.
Oh, what was I saying?
Miller.
Oh, I'm sorry, Scott Weaver. I apologize. But anyway, but looking at his salary base and being where he's been for the number of years that he has, we're not even going to begin to compete with that or want to compete with that. So I think with what we were talking about, we're looking at a position with $22, was it $22 an hour, which came out to about, was it 45.5? I don't have my ...
I don't have the figures approved, but that's not about right yet.
It was about 45.5 for the position, and if we look at the $18,000, so we're looking somewhere around the ... let me get my math here. Give me one second. Okay, and that's including the benefit packet. We already have $20,000 dedicated to the roadmaster position, so we minus that out, so then that comes down to the 43.5. So budget-wise, we would be, next year, it would just come out of general fund now, but we actually put a line item in for next year's budget.
Well, we'd have to put a line item this year, too.
This year, too? Okay. All right. But we would designate money next year for, for this year, there's no designated money. It would come out of the general fund out of surplus and generated, extra-generated revenue. So a line item would be put in, non-budgeted, but next year would be put in with a line item and budgeted. And since it comes out, the benefits come out of general, I don't know if we would decide splitting the benefit packet coming, half coming out of the roadmaster budget.
No, but it's not that way now.
It's not that way now?
No. It's all one, all the medical is medical, all the ...
Okay. All right. So, and that's the information that we have at this time. Do we want to open for public questions and comments?
No, Jim.
Yeah. All right. So at this time here, we would open the floor to any questions from the community referencing to what we just discussed.
Are we going to require this to be a township resident?
What's that?
You're going to require this to be a township resident?
We don't require, we don't require anybody right now to be a township resident, to work for the township. Though, I'm going to be honest, we would prefer somebody from the area, you know, that we have a lot of folks with experience. I would like to see somebody from our township employed. I am pleased to say that the gentleman we hired for our operator position of the road crew is a Penn Township resident. He lives just inside the Penn Township line, so I'm pleased to have that, you know, so...
Would some of these duties include the PA One calls for the township?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. As I understand it, Helen is the codes enforcement officer for the township currently?
I'm sorry.
I'm the building code official, building codes. A lot of the codes, except for zoning, is handled by the police.
Have been turned over to the police department?
Yes.
Would that be the responsibility of this new position?
I believe so, yes. We discussed that. A lot of those responsibilities that were given to the police department and subbed out to Helen and to others will be regathered back underneath that position.
Is this going to be structured as an hourly rate or a salary rate?
It's a salary rate. Yes.
So that will be the maximum they make?
Yes.
No matter how much, Helen, no matter how much anything?
I work in a position where I work at, I'm an hour, I'm salaried. Some weeks I put in 55, 60 hours, some weeks I put in 40 hours. Very rarely do I put 40 hours in it, so that's, when it comes with the position, most people understand that usually in these positions, that's what they are. Their salary.
One thing that you had mentioned, I heard with one of the changes, was something about approving the payment of the bills would be one of their responsibilities.
Yes.
Is that not currently the responsibility of the township supervisor who, at the reorganization meeting in January, is assigned to that position as they are to any other part of the township, be it the municipal authority, the oversight to the highway department and so forth? Is that not one of their jobs, their responsibilities?
Originally, it was a part of the township manager's position.
I'm thinking you guys are talking cross-purpose. The manager cannot approve the bills. The supervisors have to by law.
Correct.
But the auditors wanted, being that we had no manager, the supervisors to sign off that they saw all the bills. And that's what you're talking about, I believe.
Which can also be done by your elected auditors. That does not need to be done by a separate person. There are a lot of functions within that office that can be done by your elected township auditors.
Correct, but I believe the auditing firm.
Well, at the time, the auditing firm was asking the supervisors to do it, whoever was the point of contact. They didn't say yes or no to the elected auditor.
And I think this was implemented as in a safeguard, meaning that having three eyes see the bills and signing off that they've been seen because of past history of the embossment that took place in the township.
Believe me, I was here for that.
Yes.
Know what that was all about.
Correct.
But my question still stands. What is the job of your elected township auditors, then, who do not see the bills, who do not see the bank recs, who do not see any of that? Isn't this something that would not be necessary for a township manager to be paid $63,500 a year to do what you have people in place that could and should be doing?
I've not been aware that auditors could do that. I would have no objection to it. We were only taking, we were only taking the recommendation of the auditing firm to put these things in place to safeguard us. But there's always room for adjustment and change, but what you're stating, the $63,000 isn't just to pay for that one job that they're doing. It's to be able to bring that accountability and those things to more accessibility, you know, to address the issues that face. You know, if we do have a situation where we have an individual that may have just livestock where it's not supposed to be, you know, we have that township manager that is accessible and able to go out and assess that situation, you know, and to be able to take care of it with recommendations from our zoning and ...
Well, actually, the zoning officer would have to be doing any violation.
Correct. But he could check it out.
Beforehand, yes.
Beforehand and get that information to zoning and be that communication liaison to get some of these issues addressed much quicker than what they are being addressed.
Which is something that Helen had done, which is now pushed on to the police department, which is now going to go to the new, newly created, high-paying position.
It's not newly created. It's a position that was once in the township as a full-time. Now it's going to be, they're going to work part-time in that position and part-time as a roadmaster.
But will this not still be a full-time position?
A still full-time position altogether, yes.
And how will we determine at what point in the day we no longer deal with township And how will we determine at what point in the day, we no longer deal with township issues, and now we deal with road issues?
Well, and...
And how is that going to be split? If we're taking $20,000 out of the highway fund, out of the budget, is there a point in the day when we say, "I'm sorry, I can't take your complaint, Mr. Smith, because I need to get this bid done for this road job"?
Well, with anything that takes place, there could be some days where they spend more time on the road, and there could be some time they spend more day on the township manager. And that's where, that's where, that's where, when we change the job description, it's for that accountability to be taken. But we know that there's going to be days that they're not going to spend, they may spend 22, they may spend 20 hours, or 22 hours on the roadmaster this week, and next week they may spend 26 hours as the township manager. But that's where, that's where oversight tweaking it and developing it, you know, I believe we have a good foundation to what we put together with the original job description, to be able to have this person manage both positions. And that's why we, that's why in our interview process, that we look at the individuals, and look at their skills, and look at their abilities. I can honestly tell you, when we did the operational of the operator position, we had four or five, four or five applications of individuals that were way more qualified for the operator, but had probably excellent, not probably, they did, they came with very skilled background, where those positions, they had the qualifications to meet those positions, to meet those requirements. And we, as a board, are looking at going back and contacting those individuals, and seeing if they're still interested. So we may not even have to advertise, we have a pool of individuals that we can call back in and re-interview for this position. But I can tell you, four or five of them, at least four of them, were way qualified to be able to meet the roadmaster, and to be able to meet the township manager position.
But wouldn't that be, I don't want to really say illegal, but I think it would be, to just call in the people that you've already interviewed for a different position, because you have to advertise that ordinance?
Correct. Well, we have to advertise the ordinance, yes, we do. But I've already contacted PSAT and our solicitor, and there is nothing saying that we can't go back and interview those other people that we've received applications for. So I already checked with PSAT's law department, and attacked with our solicitor. And if we have applicants that are qualified, with the resumes that they've given, and the information they've given us, we're allowed, we're not violating any, what did she say? There was fair, fair...
Labor.
Fair labor acts, and stuff like that. We would not be in violation. So we can actually go back, see if those individuals are interested, and then if they're not, then we can go ahead and advertise, you know, for the position.
I don't see how that's fair to do it that way, I honestly don't, because you may have people out there that are just as qualified, or more qualified, and now that they see that it's not an operator's position, once they see that it's roadmaster/office manager, but they don't have an opportunity to apply and be interviewed?
Correct. Well, and I think about this, I said, you know, I said that was one of our options, to be able to do that. We wouldn't have to spend those extra expenditures out there to do advertisement for the position. We would be able to do in-house first, as in, applications, and those applications are only, what, two months old?
That's not the point. You did mention something else that really piqued my interest. When you gave the expenses and the income from the last several years, especially on the income side, going back to 2013, you said that there was $110,000 more in income than what had been projected. The township actually made money that year, as did they the next two years. And that really surprises me, Mr. Peters, to have that come from you, because just two years ago, you were telling everybody that the township was broke, we had spent our CDs, we were going under, we had no money.
Okay.
And now here we come, let me finish.
Okay.
Now you're coming along and saying, "We have $110,000 in 2013, we have $81,341 in 2014, and $75,351 more in income in 2015."
Okay.
So how did, where did all this extra income come from?
Well, one, let's get clarification. If you're going to say something that I said, be clear and correct. I never said that we're out there spending our CDs, and our CDs were gone.
I believe you had said that the township had spent all their money. Yes, you did. And I believe I have one of your letters at home.
Spent all their money. Okay, well, anyway, but I do believe that I took office in...
14.
13.
13.
In 13. So we're looking at budget numbers that were provided to me from the secretary, and from the treasures office department in the township here. So we're using numbers that were given since, and I didn't ask for numbers since I've been in office, but these were numbers that we just, Helen went back to. I didn't ask you for specific years, I said, "Could you go back several years and take a look"? I didn't say, "Go to this year and give me the information."
I'm not talking specific years, I'm just, I find it amazing that we have this much money.
So, well, since 2013, we're probably looking much better than we have in the past.
That's amazing, just amazing.
And you decided not to go back any further, right?
What's that?
You decided not to go back any further than three years.
Didn't think about it. I just asked Helen if she could provide me information, and she went back three years. So, Helen, did I ask you for any specific years, a specific date?
No, you said a couple of years, this is three or more.
So you're not going to open this up to the public for this job application?
Well, no, that hasn't, that hasn't been determined by the board. We still have to discuss that. But that was one of the questions we had when we were in executive session, was, do we have to advertise this? Okay, knowing that we already have qualified applicants. So that has not been determined by the board, and to, we make a motion to approve or not to approve this position, and to approve the expenditures, and approve advertisement.
Which brings me to another question. To have this come up this evening, not in the parameters of a regular township meeting, it's a specially-called meeting, not a regular stated meeting night, at 5:30 in the evening, when most folks are hardly home from work, what is the rush, and why this mysterious date and time? Why could this not wait until, and I think I know what answer you're going to give me, but I'm going to let you answer it.
Okay.
I don't see why this could not have waited another, what, week? Week and a half, until the regular township meeting?
We had decided, as a board, that we would bring this before executive session, to be able to discuss it, and the reason was, is that we have a lot of things facing the roadmaster position. There's budgeting things, there's bidding things, there's the, a lot of those things that, from January to now, and it was brought up that we need to get this position out there, and get it hired as soon as possible. That was the only, so, any conspiracy motive, anything, and that was what we decided. We looked at our dates, we looked at our timeframe, and that's what best fit the schedules. So there's no motive to try to keep anybody from the meeting, there's no motive, no, so any suspicion that you're putting out there is incorrect. There's no self-serving motives behind any of this.
It's not just my suspicion, it just seems awful funny to a lot of people, that, "Why would you hold this meeting tonight, oh, and we're not able to be there, because we're not home from work yet? Why couldn't it wait?"
Again...
When we have known since last year, last November, or before, but particularly in November, that you would need someone in the roadmaster position. So you've had November and December last year, and I understand why no action was taken at that point, but you've had January, February, thus far March.
Correct.
So we've not, and now all of a sudden, it's a rush, and we've got to get this done, nobody's here.
No, it's not all of a sudden, it's not, well, you know what, and that's incorrect. And I wish the other two...
Don't look that way.
I wish the other two supervisors would speak up on that issue, because it was a joint understanding for the three of us, with no malice, no suspicion, no nothing. So my heart, my conscience is clear. Joe, would you like to say anything?
Well, it's simply a matter of, we need the roadmaster position filled. This is the time that we started to discuss the matter, and we wanted to move things along a little bit, rather than waiting almost two weeks for the next meeting, and then continue on from that point. Having the meeting here tonight allows us to start the process, and gives us two additional weeks, rather than waiting on the regular scheduled meeting, to start the process in which to hire a new roadmaster.
Will there be, will there be, yes, and I agree that we do need that, but will there be any discussion at the next scheduled supervisors' meeting, or is this going to be advertised tonight, a done deal?
That's yet to be determined.
Because I think it's very much of a disservice to the citizens of this township, if this thing is rushed through tonight, without any input from your citizens. I truly do.
In what way is it a disservice, Karen?
Because your citizens who are normally here at a township meeting, and you know there are far more here on a regular scheduled night at time, than what's here tonight.
Yes.
They are not able to be here to voice any questions, any concerns, possibly a positive suggestion for this.
Well, this is the way it's been set up. Unfortunately, if there's a problem with that, then there's a problem with that. But we need to fill the roadmaster position. That's my concern. This came up a matter of a few weeks ago, when we had an executive session to put this, start putting this process together, and it was determined that we would have a meeting here tonight, so that we could advance the process a little bit, rather than delaying it for an additional two weeks, and then starting it from that point on. Another point I'd like to mention is, the $63,000 that you're referring to includes the benefits.
Right.
Okay? Commonly, when we talk about a salary for a position, we talk about the salary alone. I understand fully what you're saying with the $63,000, but the actual salary is in the $40,000 range, at $22 an hour, and that's, it doesn't come out to 63. The $63,000 figure includes a benefit package.
Right.
That comes to all the township employees.
Which is the total cost to the taxpayers?
Right.
That's correct, that's correct, yes. The total cost for the taxpayer is 63, but that includes the benefits.
Right.
When somebody has a conversation, and they mention $63,000, the reaction from the people is, "They make $63,000 a year." Now they make 40-something thousands, the additional money is benefit package.
But it's still being paid by their tax dollars.
Yes, it is still being paid, it is being paid, and it is a matter of semantics, I understand that. But in a conversation, when you discuss a salary, you discuss the money, the paycheck, not the benefits, so...
So we're going to tell people that this person is going to make $45,500 a year, is what we're going to say?
Plus benefits.
Plus benefits, that's correct.
Okay, and we're not going to say...
That's commonly the way a job description and salary is advertised and discussed.
That's why it's hidden, because nobody tells the cost of the benefits, and don't sound nearest bad.
Right.
It's not hidden, it's common that that takes place that way.
It's common, and all benefit packages are $18,000, is what she's getting at.
Well, and I think about this, it's no different than any regular employment anywhere else. I interview people all the time for positions that I hire for, and we tell them, "It's $12 an hour plus benefits."
My point is...
And that's, that's common HR lingo, or common HR practice, no matter where you go.
But you're not dealing with taxpayer money, and you want to talk about transparency?
Well, but we are transparent, we gave the benefit packet, how much it was, how much more transparency.
Yeah, here tonight, and we wrote it down, but we're going to say, we're going to advertise this as $45,500 plus benefits. Ah, good, it's Friday dress-down day, that's a benefit to my job. Who's going to know that it's $18,000 more of their tax money going toward that person's salary?
First of all, anytime you advertise a position, you very rarely advertise the paid position, on what the...
That's why I'm saying, it's not being discussed with your township residents, other than the, what, six of us that are here, five of us?
And it was properly advertised, wasn't it, Helen? Okay?
Yeah, for a time that you never have a meeting, 5:30 in the evening?
Like I said, that was consensus for the three supervisors, and there was no selfish motive, there was nothing back behind it, and that's what you wish to believe, it's your truth, but it's not true, because I can sit here and tell you with a clean, clear conscience, there was no motives behind it, and you can wait, brush your eyebrows all you want, CC and shake your head all you want, you know...
You've proved too many dis-truths to me before, I can't, I just find it very hard to believe that this isn't something you really...
Well, and we can say the same thing about you, but I'm not going to be like other leaders, that they want to hash the back. I'm about here in the future. And what's important for our township is that we have good oversight, and responsible people in positions to do what they have to do, and that's what we're looking at, making sure that the job gets done every day. Bottom line. And does, I feel, maybe the other supervisors can express, I feel the benefit weighs, the benefit outweighs of what's going to come, and that we're going to have that accountability in the township oversight, and some of these things, so... Yes, sir?
Is the roadmaster's position going to be a working roadmaster's position, or is it going to be one of them that becomes a finger-pointing position, and spends the time in the office?
No, that position is very clear, that they will be working with the crew, there may be times that they go out and give the crew an assignment, and maybe they have to go take care of that, but it is a working position. It's not a desk job, it's not. They're going to be out there with the crew, making sure that things are being taken care of, they're going to be doing the bids, they're going to be doing whatever the roadmaster job description is, nothing's changed.
Will that be coded out as such, compared to the rest of its job occupation?
The roadmaster's job description hasn't changed.
So you'll have separate coding on the billing process, so we'll know at the end of the year on the budget, exactly what he did, and where he was at.
That can be done, very easily, very easily can be done.
I think you'll find that's very valuable for the roadmasters, this community.
And we very well set the budget up to do that.
Oh, yeah.
You know, so that way, you know, kind of like what the police department do, if they're out doing DUI, there's a line item that they bill for the grant money for DUI, correct?
Yes.
And, but they still get paid, you know, and that way, we show the state that grant money is being spent where they said it's being spent.
So if you want accountability on who he's going, what that person's going to...
Oh, and I agree with you, and that's what we want, sir. We do, we want that accountability, we don't want this to go astray and array, like the office manager, or the township manager's position went once before. Okay? So that's why we went, line by line, on the job description, making sure that those things are in place, you know, to give that accountability. And believe me, you know, and I have made myself very, very much accessible to the office, and to the other two supervisors, as much as I can enable to, even on a call of a dime, Helen's called me about situations, and with minutes I have been there, or on the phone, taking care of things, or whatever, so, believe me, is if I see things going array, those two supervisors will know about it, Helen will let us know about it, whoever's going to let us, and I'm sure the residents in the township are going to ask, you know, "It's 12:05, why is the guy sitting down at Sorento's"? "Oh, because 12:05, he could be eating lunch." Okay? But there is, there is that accountability, there is communication through either phone or radio with the township manager/roadmaster. So there is those accountability things there, that he leaves the site, has to go take care of this. That's the flexibility of this position. It's a dual position, that's managing both the roadmaster, and handling the township manager, and the business of the township.
I would encourage you to open it up for public advertising.
We did open it up for public advertisement.
I mean for the position, once you accept it.
Oh, you mean, oh, yes, okay, oh, yeah, we'll take that recommendation, oh, absolutely, absolutely. You mean to advertise it to the...
There's a lot of prospective people out there who have desire for this job, I might be surprised.
Correct.
You might find people who... You might find people newly retired that might be interested in it.
So... Okay, all right. I'll go ahead and make the motion then that we go ahead. I'm sorry, Brian, do you have anything you'd like to, any input or any comments?
Is there a possibility of getting a copy of that draft then?
What's that?
Is there a possibility of having a copy of that draft, once it's corrected?
What draft?
The ordinance.
Of the ordinance?
That's up to you guys.
Well, is that a right to know?
Well, no, it's not a right to know. Once the ordinance is advertised, everyone can get a copy of it.
Okay.
That's the rule.
Okay. So... Anything to add, Joe?
No, nothing.
All right, I'd like to make the motion then at this time here that we go ahead and advertise for the ordinance to establish or re-establish the township manager's position in Penn Township, Perry County.
Now, for advertising, I have to do it two weeks. So, I was going to send it up today before I left. Let's see, I'm on the wrong mark. So, that would be the, coming out the 24th and 31st. So, it'd have to be the, oh, my, it's Monday, I can't read that calendar here, Mike.
It would be the 6th, 14th.
Well, you already have a meeting on the 9th. So, it'd have to be no later than the 6th. Earliest would be the 7th.
Earliest would be the 7th.
Now, you have roadmaster meeting, and you have supervisors.
Roadmaster meeting is Wednesday, 8th?
The 9th.
Oh, 9th. Oh, that's the...
That's where you can drag around.
Correct. So, we may not advertise for the position until, until the ordinance has been approved?
For the manager, you couldn't, no. I don't believe so. You could double-check the mark on that, but I don't believe you could for the manager.
I don't think we could. I mean, if this ordinance establishes the office...
Correct, exactly. So, we can't advertise when it's been established.
I don't think we can.
Correct. Okay, so, for earliest that we could do is April the 7th.
7th would be the earliest. With the understanding, you already have a scheduled meeting on the 9th. You already have a scheduled meeting on the 27th.
27th. So, we could then advertise it for that Saturday. What time we schedule it, is it 8 o'clock?
8 o'clock.
8 o'clock. So, we could take care of this prior to going out on the road survey.
That's normally how it's done, anything, any business is normally done before that, before you guys go out.
Okay.
But we reopen the meeting when we come back, is that not correct?
You would, you're not adjourned, you're...
Resessed?
Yes, that's the word. You're recessed while you're actually out there.
Okay.
And then you come back, open it up, start the business again, and then you can do anything.
Okay. So, do we want to do this before the road survey? Or do we want to do it after the road? Because I don't know how long this is going to take, so if we advertise it for, the road survey starts at 8:00, are we going to be done by a certain time or make sure we're done by a certain time and be back here?
Well, that's what we have to do.
Yeah. I mean, we're going to...
And the thing is, if you're going to advertise the meeting, the meeting itself starts when we come together to begin the road survey.
Correct.
And then we'd be in recess until we return from the road survey, and then we take care of any other business that we're adjourned with.
Yes.
So...
So, we could advertise 8 o'clock, but...
Well, the meeting is off. The roadmaster meeting is already advertised to start at 8 o'clock. That's already done.
Correct.
And how is it advertised, Helen?
And any other business is not possible. But let me double-check, sir. Because nor is any other business. I don't know.
Unless we want to have a total separate meeting on the 7th, or do we want to kill two birds with one stone? That's the other option is...
What's the advantage to the other, another meeting?
Well, the other...
Rather than the 9th.
The other meeting is that if we do it on the 7th...
And any other business.
Okay. If we do it on the 7th, then we can make it at 7 o'clock in the evening and have a meeting just for the ordinance. Or we can just take care of the ordinance, but when we advertise on the 7th, we can say 7 o'clock and know that it's going to be 7 o'clock. If we advertise for it on the 9th, we have to say, you know, the roadmaster starts at 8, starts at 8:00, but at the conclusion of the roadmaster survey will be open for...
So, we can't say what time that's going to be?
We can't say exactly what time it's going to be.
Does it run into a problem?
So, we run into the suspicion that we're stacking the deck.
I don't think we want to have it on the 9th.
So, we can go ahead and have it on the 7th.
Do you want to conduct it? Do you want to conduct it before we go on the roadmaster, or do you want to have it on the 7th? Either or, it doesn't make any difference to me.
If we do it on the 9th, we can advertise it, and then we open up the meeting with that first and then go get the survey.
That's... Some days probably in the morning.
Yes. So, yeah, I know, we're just opening up another can. So, I really think, I think for commonality, I think if we just do it on the 7th at 7:00 P.M.
I guess the better of the two.
Yeah.
That's fine. That works for me. Any other conflicts on the 7th with any other meeting?
Not much, no.
I mean, either or doesn't make any difference. If you want to have a meeting on the 7th at 7:00, it works.
This is pretty much how we picked the date for tonight, which is what we just did. Same process. Yes, Bob?
When you advertise it, don't make the advertisement sound like you canceled the other meeting. You'll have to combine the advertisement for both meetings.
There'll be two separate, there'll be two separate...
There'll be two separate dates, so...
There'll be two separate advertisements, right?
Are you going to mean for the 7th?
Yes.
Yeah, that'll be separate just for this.
Yes.
Okay, but maybe the other one would already advertise?
The April 9th is, because I normally do them as soon as I can.
You know, would a period of people coming in that you canceled the other meeting that? But Mike and...
No, we could always reiterate that night on the agenda that we still have the roadmaster on the 9th, so, but that's a separate advertisement. Okay, so, is to advertise the ordinance for April the 7th at 7:00 P.M. For approval at that time.
For adoption of the...
For adoption. Do I have a second?
A second to that motion.
Okay, motion's been second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed say nay. Ayes have it, motion passes for advertisement of the ordinance and meeting skipped. At this point here, we really can't go on to the budget line to make a motion to approve the budget line.
Oh, no, that will be...
That'd be the same day as the ordinance.
Yeah, well, I, yeah, that's going to be more than, more than 10% of the budget, so, you guys got to prove the budget line item. I can have everything, the number and everything there.
Do we approve that tonight, or do we have to wait until the...
I would wait because I have to look it up.
Right. And I think we can't approve a budget on something that a position hasn't been established yet.
Yeah, so we can...
So, the budget, so the line items would have to be passed, and, but we can't pass the job description. Do we have to pass it, or is that just a...
That's an, I thought that was an internal...
Yeah, that's, yeah, correct.
Internal thing.
Yeah, that's a policy.
Yeah.
So, we don't have to, we don't have to do that.
Assuming that on the 7th, this is adopted, do you want me to draft up a advertisement for the job?
I'm going to say have it.
Okay.
Have it.
That's what I...
Because we have to make that decision, and I'm not opposed to opening it up to others.
Yeah.
Not opposed to it at all?
No. I think that's a good idea.
Any further discussion on the topic of the office manager, budget-wise? Okay. Next line there, we have the Dino's and Sitco properties. Looking at the condition of those two properties, though we don't have a blighted property ordinance in the township, but we do have a nuisance policy. And I do believe our...
Inspector.
Inspector has been out on another property in the township that will come up at our next meeting, the regular meeting. But I'd like to just put before the board something for us to think about between now and our next meeting, that we may want to go ahead and get our, he just said his name.
Bob, Bob, the inspector.
Our inspector out to inspect the two properties for safety and other situations where we may have to take further action in the future on those two properties. So, just something for you to think about, for us to be able to have those buildings inspected and be able to see what he recommends for us to do with those properties and those that own that properties. So... All right, at this time here, we'd like to open up the floor for recognition of visitors. Who's first on the list there? Anybody?
Cece's first.
Cece, you're first.
Thank you.
Henry? Johnson, hub?
No, not in the daytime. Andy and Judy, no.
No.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, is there any other business from the supervisors, anything?
I have some updates.
Okay.
The Schoolhouse Road property with the animals, Lenny's going to be sending out a letter. He asked me to go try to get some pictures of the animals, so I'll do that tomorrow.
Okay.
The gentleman in the Ward property?
Yes.
I've talked to the police, asking them to check that one out.
You mean where they're doing all the excavation?
No, where the gentleman's living in a building he shouldn't be living in.
Okay.
He hasn't found any evidence that he's living there yet, but then the gentleman works, I believe, and he said he's going to have to check on the night, at night.
All right. Does, do we know if Ward has knowledge of this individual?
According to, Ward denies he's living there.
Okay, all right. So, he's a vagrant, according to...
If he's living there, that can...
Or a squatter.
That can be a definition, yes.
A squatter, yeah. Could be a squatter without the landlord's knowledge. And I don't think they have squatter rights in Pennsylvania, do we?
I don't know.
They don't?
That's not true. He knows that he's living there because he's collecting minimal rent from him. He knows he's there. He's been there for how many years?
Then you run into a whole different problem. Now, you have a landlord-tenant situation, and so...
But those copies have already been, have they been condemned already?
No.
Where he's living, okay.
No.
Which is inhabitable because there's no electric, no plumbing, no water.
See, I don't have any knowledge of if that's a fact or not, whether no water, no electric. I've been told that.
Do we have a township official that can make that determination, can go visit, so you can make that determination?
Bob.
Bob? Bob Ball?
In this case, I would have Mr. Ward there at the same time as the landlord.
Police department.
Yes. Yeah, well, now, when I think the police needs to escort Bob on that one.
So, and these were just things for us to, I mean, we can approve tonight for Bob to go ahead and check it out. That way, maybe by the next meeting, we have more information.
We can get in information, yeah.
Do we need that motion out, or can we just direct it?
I would because it's going to be spending money.
Would make a motion for us to have our...
Building code inspector.
Building code. I make the motion that we have our building code inspector look into the situation of an individual living in the residence or living in a building on, I guess we call it the Ward property.
Yeah.
The Ward property, which is, at this time here, seems to be an abandoned motel at this time.
It was a motel.
Okay.
Partners.
For possibly...
Violations.
Violations.
Okay. Now, we understand that when Bob goes in, he's looking at it through the building code.
Correct.
Okay, not the nuisance ordinance.
Correct. But he'll be able to determine if somebody's living there.
Yes.
Along with the police, they'll be able to determine.
Mm-hmm.
Do we have a second on that motion?
We second that motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed say nay. Ayes have it. We give Helen authorization to get that started.
Okay, and then the other thing I have is, the cable is run throughout the building I got, I put it in your packets. I got a quote for a TV and, well, this is the quote per price, but we're looking at three, for the mount and the TV to, like, upon the walls.
Okay.
And that is, we're looking at $218 for both of them.
Both or three?
Oh, well, each, I'm sorry. $218 for each. So, they come out to $654.
Because you're getting three, right?
Yes. And that's, the reason for that is for the weather channels, the news, in case something's happening that we don't hear about, which happens.
And they also could be announced in the command center.
In the command center, and if we have people up here, they can, we could bring a TV in and set up for their entertainment and information type of thing.
Where would the mounts be located?
One in the township office and two police offices right now.
Two police offices.
Now, this room's already wired, all the rooms are wired.
We're talking about the mounts for...
Yeah, but the mounts, yes. And they would be up on the walls. And this came in free under the franchise agreement with the cable company. The cable, we're not paying for it. That's just above my limit, I'm allowed to spend without asking.
Helen, have you ever gotten the free internet out of them for this?
Yes, we do have it in.
Good.
I just got to give you guys your information to sign up your internet thing. Actually, Susan should have your free...
Okay, good.
...thing.
Oh, is that for the wireless?
Yeah, for the internet. I also have that, but we have wireless.
Okay. But this is for the public access?
I, well, we have that, too. I got that password.
So, that's separate from what you were just talking about?
You guys...
Two different things.
Yeah, we got the free wireless one.
Correct.
What I'm asking to spend money on is the...
The TVs.
TVs for the cable, but email addresses.
Oh, the email address.
I got your email addresses so that if something ever comes up and people want that right-to-know information, it's not your personal.
Exactly.
Not your property, anyway.
I'm confused. You say you want prices for mounts, but you're talking also about TVs. You say you're, you want prices for mounts, but you're talking also about TVs. Do you need to purchase TVs to go on these mounts?
Yes, yes.
That's what's here.
Yes, see, this is the full.
It's a combined price.
Yeah, the true, the.
This total place for a package.
Yeah, I just wrote it down there. See, this is the price they gave me.
Okay.
And installation will be free, so I've arranged for that. And if we have another sleepover because of flooding or something, they won't be following you around. Like the big conference room, we would not need to get a TV because we have, we were donated, the Parker Records donated a huge TV that's down there now.
And this is something that we would have capability of, of eventually attaching a laptop or computer to it.
Oh, definitely, yeah.
And be able to put things up on the screen for public.
Mm-hmm.
And maybe a little bit more, um, of being able to see what we're doing here, you know, as in if there's some, say if we're, I don't know.
You mean as in recording the meetings or something?
No, zoning, no, zoning wise. If, if somebody was, wanted to talk about an area, we can actually bring up that area so people can actually see what we're talking about.
Yeah, that is impossible, I guess.
Yes. Google Maps or something, you know, whatever.
Yeah, we just.
Correct. Okay. All right. Do we have a motion on the table to approve Helen to purchase the three televisions and the three mounts?
I'll make the motion that we approve the amounts for the job she just described yesterday.
Okay. All right, good. Do we have a second? I'm sorry.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Ayes have it, the motion passes for the purchase, give Helen authorization to purchase the three televisions and the three mounts. Anything else at this time?
No, sir.
Okay.
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Something else I was thinking about while this was all going on. If you take the $18,000 on the benefit package that you present, and a person comes into here and applies for this job application and wishes not to take that benefit package, will that come into a cash option for them? Because with that one, it comes out to a $30 an hour job.
Good. Uh, in no place have I ever worked, has that ever been an option.
Okay.
So it's not, it's not a standard practice.
So basically with the benefit package, we were paying somebody $30 an hour for total cost plus. It's a little over $30 an hour, am I correct?
Um, if that's the math. But it's no different than Helen's position, or?
Yeah, but there's other outfits, and I work for one, that we work for a total package.
Okay.
And that's what we're negotiated as. And that's the important bottom line, it makes it a lot nicer, not the hidden structure that comes into this. So it comes out to over a $30 an hour package, is what I'm explaining, okay? What everybody else has been talking about here and keeping it low and making it simple, making it sound low-key, it actually comes out to be a pretty good deal.
Okay, well, nobody's here has stated that we're keeping it low-key.
No, but that's how that, when you talk about that with benefits, when you negotiate a wage with benefits, the benefit package needs to be put into an hourly number so the people and the taxpayers know the assessed value of.
Correct. And we've been very transparent with that. I was just saying, when you advertise it, you don't advertise with, you say, you don't even advertise with hourly rate or anything, it's just advertise the position. And then upon interview, it's usually the person, either we discuss the, and we do discuss the salary, plus the benefit packet. So there's, there's no secrecy or no conspiracy here unless that's just something people want to conjure up themselves.
I did not accuse it of being conspiracy. I'm just telling facts that are fact.
Well, and we have.
Am I correct?
Yeah.
Am I correct in my statement, it is a fact. It's $30 an hour.
Is that what it comes out to? I haven't.
Actually, 30 plus, because it's a lot cents.
Okay, so.
All you gotta do is take the 60-some thousand if you're doing it, divide it into 40 hours a week, 52 weeks.
What is it, $30.22? Oh, I didn't think you guys were.
That'd be about right. If not, yeah, if I'm not mistaken, isn't this intended to be a part-time position?
No, it's a full-time position that's going to be the roadmaster and the township manager.
Right, but the township manager portion of the position is part-time. This, am I confused or mistaken?
Well, no, it's a full-time position with dual responsibility. Half the responsibility is the roadmaster, half the responsibility is township manager.
Okay.
That's what we originally discussed it as.
Yes.
As one position, it's just that they would be filling to two positions. When I say part-time, I mean that part of their time is roadmaster, part of their time is township manager. And if you can, uh, I'm trying to process of what you're saying there about the 18,000, so you're saying you want to, instead of giving them.
Say somebody, say somebody has all that, they're retired, Chris, they come in here, they want to come to work.
Okay.
They want no benefit packages and no nothing, they just want money.
Okay, so you're saying.
Would that be entertained?
So you're saying give them the $18,000.
The other person's gonna receive it.
So, so whether we, oh, yeah, if they say they.
Okay. Or you're gonna negotiate that person down on it, is what I'm getting at. That's what I'm asking a question about this.
Oh, well, I can't tell you because we have, we have, there's not been a thought of consideration because that's outside of the norm.
Yeah, I might interject. We're advertising with this package, the, the hourly rate plus the benefits, and that's the way it's advertised. If we have a, an applicant come in who we believe is qualified, that tells us that they have the benefit package, they're not interested in that, I'd be more than happy to listen to them and discuss that then. But we can't go in looking at it in that fashion. We gotta go in looking at it as a whole. But to answer your question, I'd be more than happy to sit and listen to it and discuss it and consider it. But I don't want to give an answer right now because the right now, our concern is getting the advertisement out.
Correct, I understand.
And then we'll have to deal with that on an individual basis as it comes up, if it comes up. And I, I, I don't know how else you can go about it.